And thank you guys for your patience. We are on action items.
Seven of them.
Bullets. All in favor? Aye. So we are back. We are on personnel actions. So we need to have a vote with some sort of personnel action.
Mr. Chair, if we table the coaching my condition, then we accept all their personnel actions as listed.
And so move, is there a second?
Second.
I'll be moving to second, discussion? 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 All in favor of table the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same as aye. Motion passes. Policy review. So on second reading, we have. I don't think there's any changes on the, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. These are the policies that were up for first reading back in March and are no changes.
Can we get a motion to approve the policy review on their second reading? Their second?
Second.
The problem with the second is any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to confirm how we can go ahead with all four of those policies. Would you want to give us? I would put back yes, just to confirm.
So, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Jacobs, just one clarification, two of those policies would be moved to replace sort of two that are specifically made in KLA.
Any other discussion? Discussion, see the motion proceed to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same as aye. Motion passes. We have the approval, or to approve stipulated agreement. This is our board package. Voice review now, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Discussion, discussion. See the motion proceed to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Then we get to D. And we want to have a motion to approve salary and benefits for the 2025-2026 school year. So moved. Move, is there a second?
Second.
Probably a second, discussion?
Great work by, uh, our team, all the reps from various buildings and types of facilities. I thought discussions were very productive and all those in my community involved in that process. Great, very good job.
Just another point of clarification, are we voting these all along together or do we need a separate meeting?
Together.
Okay.
For the discussion?
I did have one question, Mr. Chair. I know we had received some communication from teachers who were also working as coaches. Is that addressed within the discussions and?
Not, that, that specific scenario was not addressed in discussions this year. Take that advice.
Okay. Thank you.
For the discussion? See the motion proceed to vote, all in favor of approving salary and benefits package for 2025-2026, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, science resource adoption. Mara? Want to talk about that?
Um, I was just gonna say that our team, I think, did a great job and I support all of the curriculum proposed.
Mr. Chair, yes, there's an attachment, a link in here, presentate your general materials. And Deidre Myers, ready to talk a little bit about that resource adoption process, just to make sure that you have any questions to ask.
Yeah, I've been directed to make it short, so I did remove three slides off of this, but thank you, Mara, I appreciate that. Um, just a quick reminder that when we go through the resource adoption, we start looking at resources that's September. By November, we have narrowed down, we do vertical discussion. Um, and then I have those bullets you'll see in that slide deck of what we look for to ensure that these resources are supporting district instructional frameworks, evidence-based, those pieces. And, um, the computer science one, they've actually, Mr. Meyer at the middle school, Mr. Hart-Penset Pathfinder, and, um, Hannah Durango at the high school, all have been using it. I had the rights to use it all year. Um, and so they absolutely love that resource. And it's evidence-based and it's just giving our kids a higher, we're getting kids going through middle school and up into high school, and then they're A.T. computer science, going out into the field with computer science. And, um, the original just wasn't deep enough at the middle school level, so we need to give more rate at the middle school. You know, that resource. But you'll see on there all of the evidence-based and strategies, I want them looking for finding these resources. And then we have our CCC meeting. Oh my gosh, what was that, Mara, that sounds, I don't remember.
One?
Yes.
What can I have here?
One, then I have a go, we had a parent rep, we had, um, Mr. Harris, we had Matt Jacobson, we had Mara, and a teacher. And then I sent it out for feedback, so they could still look at it and, um, let them work. So if you have any questions, let me know, but we would like to get those orders, so teachers can even tell us. Any more questions, please?
I guess, um, Deidre, I have a couple of questions about within science, so how was that, will that like, did you pilot that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we've heard two years, I think, less, but I just wanted to start, I, I was thinking we were talking about pure science. So, um, and so that one aligns with the NGSF standards, right? But since Wyoming has changed that, so can they just, the teacher, I can choose what parts of that, or how will that?
Yeah, we actually have, and I can link it, or it actually might be in what I shared out with the survey for CCC, it won't be in this document, so I can reshare it. But, um, there's a scope and sequence, and so Mr. Horton took, and you can speak to this more than I, because I just started the process with him, and Johnny took it over. Where the teachers actually took those, um, Michael Bauer had used it last year and next year. And then the other two teachers, they looked at three different resources, and they worked really, really hard. And then they moved the open side and spoken sequence and looked at the needs of our kids and identified where it's going to be taught in spoken sequence six or eight. With the vertical up in the high schools as well. So that's together there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Taylor, it's not necessarily picking and choosing so much as it is just realigning to make sure that the standards are, um, equitable across the three grade levels. Um, because in middle school, it's a band, so, um, the standards don't, the state doesn't assign the standard to a grade level. So, um, so for the most part, yeah, they, they've just recently been working to make sure that the workload is, is pretty close to equal in terms of the standards that we cover at each grade level and now they're, um, the efficiency scales with that.
Does the curriculum change anything as far as like, is it still hands-on experiment? I know you have products with science.
We have, I think this will build up, this will build a network, because this is actually a free resource, open site and it's free. And so we'll have funds to buy more lab and hands-on. So that was one of their winning arguments for that was, if you buy it at hand, you're a book and you're kind of abstract there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's awesome, so I'm one of the other things, so I, that was my question. If you ever want to see the whole presentation, feel free. Thank you.
All right, do we have, we need to get a motion to approve the adoption of the science. Changes?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? 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 All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same as aye. Motion passes. Okie dokie, here we go. So, uh, enrolled Act 24, policy CKA, back up for discussion. And I'm gonna refer to Superintendent Harris, who's been working diligently on this thing, he's got much to share.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, enrolled Act 24 is now the name of House Bill 172, since it was passed by both, um, houses of the legislature. Allowed to pass into law without the governor's signature, but it is, it's a law nonetheless, and it takes effect in our state on July 1st. Basically, what this does is repeal some gun-free zone legislation at the state level and establishes K-12 schools as allowable locations for anyone with a concealed carry permit to carry a firearm. Obviously a lot of controversy with that statute, but it is settled law at this point, for my understanding, it's a, it's a, it's what we're, we're going to have in effect on, on July 1st. What happened with that in rolled Act 24 is the, um, some of the, the state statute that was the basis of our policy CKA, which was passed five years ago, that statute is no longer current, it's basically repealed. Um, so that follows under our policy CKA, it's also going to be out of date by July 1st. Our current policy CKA has a lot of regulations around which individuals who are employees can carry. There's an approval process, starting with the individual supervisor, superintendent, the school board. There's a whole lot of training requirements that are layered on top after there's an individual approved to carry. That naming process is no longer part of the state statute. So basically, any individual who has a concealed carry card in the state of Wyoming can carry, and that includes employees. So what that means for us in terms of policy is our CKA can either be amended, we can, um, because I think the statute says something about individuals who have concealed carry permits and they're in training, school have to have some training of some sort. It's not specific as to what that training is. WSBA has put together some ideas around draft policy. If the district wanted to amend their current policy to put some stipulations in place for training of staff and say staff members got to meet these requirements to carry. A district could do that, in WSBA's estimation. However, the district could not ask the employee to furnish those training credentials or use that as a way to like limit to compare. You can't say, well, you haven't shown us your training, proof of training, so you can't carry. It would only be if there was some incident where an employee got forbidden, left a weapon out unattended, or they brandished a weapon and there was some sort of disciplinary process or review. If they didn't have the training at that point, it could be part of a disciplinary action that like, you were carrying, you had this thing you're right, but if this policy, if the board, if the school has such a policy, that could be a factor, it could also be considered that they were not appropriately carrying because they hadn't met the district's training requirements. So basically, what this action item is today is to, for the board to discuss and hopefully determine whether you would like to have some amendments to our current policy CKA, which will be significantly scaled back, all the application pieces, all the naming pieces, the psychological testing, all of that would be done away with. And the, the favored ones revised CKA would basically just entail, here's what we'd like employees to have in terms of training, here's who's qualified to provide that training, what these certain qualifications are. Um, and that's about it, based on what the new statute has in. Questions on that?
Yeah, so we need, so tonight we need to approve, just that we're going to, we're gonna make some changes, what ones that we need to?
So I, I think, to sum it up, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Chair, I think the district has two options. You can either just let CKA expire as of June 30th and then be obsolete. Or you can amend the current policy, and that would entail a public rulemaking process similar to what happened with CKA, was passed initially in 2020. And that would include a 45-day public comment period. And then at that point, you would have some sort of policy drafted based on the public comment and WSBA policy, model policy for the board to consider in June. So tonight's decision isn't to do any particular specifics of the policies, just to say, hey, we would like to do a public rulemaking and pursue some changes to our CKA. If you don't want to do that, then the CKA policy would have to be deleted in June, because it would no longer be current as of July 1st.
Good my ignorance, I guess, so what, what makes this, this different than another, like, policies we just approved in a second reading? Why don't we say a first and second reading, what was different here?
I think because, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, because it involves a rulemaking process, something about this particular piece of district policy, when it was done in 2020, and I don't remember the statutes that underpin that decision, but I think the original state statute required a rulemaking process for school districts, and this would be the same, this deal with, um, something in this, in this, in this arena of carrying a firearm in the school district makes it so that there are a rulemaking process that applies. According to Scott Colpitt, he, and according to WSBA.
It would probably, I just don't understand. Well, I, it seems to me that we should probably take action and suggest we're gonna make a rule, so we have that 40-day, 45-day period. I would imagine, I, I would like us to consider how we might amend the policy. I think there's a discussion that we have, but it was totally.
Yeah, I agree, but I, I think that the policy should, I think this idea of suggesting background, experience, and training, it's interesting that you can't, you can't enforce that, correct? That you're saying, as far as, maybe if they had a self-carry card, whether they're an employee, so we can't regulate a employee that's a self-carry card, we can't deny them the ability to carry.
Mr. Chair?
Have some suggestion of that model we'd like to see.
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Jacobs, yeah, that's correct, we can't require that as a prerequisite for approval, we can't approve anyone to carry or disapprove anyone to carry. We can just say, you are carrying on our property, you're an employee, you have to have training that meets these minimum qualifications. That may not be an issue for any of the employees to choose to carry, but if there is one who has an issue where the firearm becomes at issue in the, whatever the situation is, then that could be used as, as a disciplinary factor, if they said they got the training, and they built the policy, they said they got the training or didn't say, but then it turns out they didn't have it, then that could be a problem.
It seems like one of the benefits of CKA for, for, for this case, that is that the district pays for training. Seems to me it would be proven force, maybe to continue to offer pay-for-training for staff that are gonna, that want to use it and self-carry, uh, permanent, and carry on campuses. But I think we provide, or would provide lock boxes and those sorts of things, or under CKA, we were doing that, so those would be things that we could, that we should probably consider. How would I approach those? That is.
Can we require employees to put their weapons in lock boxes if this is now passed, they can just carry on them?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Jacobs, I believe the requirement is that they have, it has to be on their person or in their direct control at all times. So to read that means on your person or in a, or locked in a box, that's an accessible thing.
Which is less easy to require.
Yes, yes, I just, I just see.
Do you have a question or a question? So this is for employees, so we, we have them standing over, anybody coming into our building that's not in the building.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Harms, that's correct, members of the general public at a basketball game or are very tight.
For a meeting.
Or meeting, exactly, uh, we, members of the public, there are no stipulations around carrying on campuses anymore, provided they have a concealed carry. Uh, open carry is not permitted, concealed carry is permitted.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, we, we would have opportunity for people to have the stipulations that we had in CKA, but under the new law, couldn't a person just carry and not really care about what we say? Or we say?
Mr. Chair, that's true, they could, I mean, they, they have the ability now, uh, the legislature needed, has the right to carry, if you're an employee. All ours, our revised CKA would do is say, this is the district's expectation in terms of training, if you don't have it and there's some incident, that could be a factor in what the resulting discipline is.
So that would be breaking the law, that could be breaking our policy, it could be, you know, the manager of the fire.
Right. Mr. Chair, reply?
What does that need to sound like, uh, so if I say, I move that we, um, get notice, 45-day notice of a rule change to our CKA policy? I'll make that motion.
I'll say that. So do we have to have something drafted before this goes out for public comment?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Jacobs, yes, um, in anticipation of tonight's vote, Mr. Colpitt, our legal counsel has, I've been, been noticed that he can customize for Fremont County, get that out to the public and begin that 45-day public comment period. He's very familiar with the steps that are necessary to do the rulemaking process, and he can just make sure we're, we're getting all those steps and the time periods associated.
And Mr. Chair, would you be able to share WSBA's model policy and the information that they have with us?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Harms, yes, I, I do have a copy of the whole policy, I didn't want to preempt your decision with that, but I, I'll have that, I can email it out or, or if others give it to you for the next meeting or wherever you prefer.
So, do we have a second?
Could you restate the motion, make sure the other way?
Okay, so I, I move that, uh, that we give, uh, the appropriate public notice, which I've been able to support a rule change to the CCCKA.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Um, I think we've discussed, is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That would be fine. Okay. Oh, yeah.
You want to lead or I?
So, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that Fremont County School District Number One Board approves the addition of Jenny Hamilton of Hudson, Wyoming to the Lander District Record Board for a five-year term.
I'll second that option.
Moving to seconded, is there discussion?
Yes, has Jenny Hamilton accepted this, uh, proposed change?
We interviewed her and said we would love to have her join pending the approval of the board, but I think she's ready to go in the future. We were really.
She might be surprised?
No, no, she will not be surprised. No, we were really, um, trying to find someone from an outline community, so we were hoping for Jeffrey C. Hudson or, or, sorry.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in opposed, or passing. Okay, all in review, discussion items. We have, feel the lead, and we have B E D J, streaming and recording of meetings. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chair, yes, B E D J was actually an existing policy on the books, the title has been changed and modernized to streaming slash recording instead of broadcasting. I can't remember what it said, something about eight-track cassettes or something. Um, basically what this does is, uh, at the board's direction at our last meeting in March, um, the board directed me to put together some revisions to this policy to reflect our requirements around streaming and recording of meetings, including maintaining recordings of board meetings for future access and often, you know, through YouTube or some other similar platform. So you can see there on the draft, the language in yellow, I added in. Um, basically what this says is that we will, we will live stream our web meetings as we've been doing, but we'll also record them and make them available for online viewing. And we also allow photography, live streaming, recording by staff or members of the public. It doesn't have to be only official recording here, as we have a member of the public recording tonight that will continue. Uh, there's some stipulations I had here that you don't need to express permission of all parties to record in the meeting. If you are at the meeting, you should assume that it's being recorded. And, uh, that's about it. Oh, the final piece was in response to one of the concerns that our legal counsel had about retaining, um, records of, in meeting state requirements around the protection of, of, uh, public records. I would just add it, I add it on here, the, these recordings would be maintained in accordance with state records, retention statutes and rules, because those are likely to change over the years. Um, we'll just follow whatever, whatever the state requires.
So you anticipate, before we know it, we'll post our recording to YouTube.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, yes, so it would probably be YouTube, but you know, there's another, you know, platform that become quite a lot of everybody's stuff.
I don't think we need to edit the policy, but I would just remind us all to use our microphones when we switch, consume recordings, because that's the key to actually being heard.
Okay, may I talk about J F C G, tobacco-free school?
Mr. Chair, thank you, yes, this is one of the four tobacco-free schools policies that we have on the books, or have on the books currently. They're all almost identical. I think G D K, which you all just passed in second reading a few minutes ago, will suffice, so this is just really what I knew as redundant policies, J F C J, or C G, and K B C.
So we have that motion to, to leave those?
Mr. Chair, no action, this is just a discussion item for, for this one.
Okay. Now we've got proposed handbook changes, um, and administrative, should I share some of the changes in the meeting? So, who wants to go first? Who's the longest?
We're just gonna call them when you get there, if you're not gonna be taking some.
All right, LA, just never changes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, um, the one proposed change that I recommended for the handbook for OHS for 25-26 is to change our cell phone policy to match the policy passed by Fremont County School District Number One. So you'll see those changes reflected in the memo that I've submitted, that's the only change I've suggested or asked for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pathfinder?
Oh, hold on one second, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'm just, we're reading, I think tomorrow we're doing drug testing policy, so any changes, if my result from that would then be included in the second meeting in May?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Pathfinder?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, it would be the same, updating our cell phone policy. And then we switched to, um, having our school-wide expectations, our four-school-wide expectations, so I included those in the handbook just as an update. And then, um, oh, our responsibility grade rubric was in our handbook, and we just updated that this year, also to align with our four-school-wide expectations, so just an update from there.
Members of the.
Mr. Uh, Chair, members of the board? Uh, we have seen a lot of toys at the middle school. And I've had to ask myself over and over again, and I've asked, like, uh, Ms. Hawn was there one day when this was happening, and I asked her very genuinely, like, am I being unreasonable when I'm asking these middle schoolers to put their toys away? And she was like, no, you're not. So we've added to the hallway, um, expectations, please don't bring toys to school. Um, 3D printers are making cool toys, we mainly, we see a lot of articulated dragons and things like that. That didn't exist, so we're not editing, we're just adding that. Um, we have adopted a digital pass system, and so we just changed the language around hall passes to align with that system. It allowed, it, it gives us, uh, much more user-friendly data around, um, patterns for students, uh, in and out of class. Um, it helps us know where students are, helps the office find students. So we're, we're currently using that program, we just wanted the handbook to reflect that. And then we edited the behavior matrix we're proposing, um, just to, to add clarity to the, um, the conversation surrounding stipulated agreements. The language in our handbook currently said two to 10 days OSS. Um, and so we just edited it to say 10 days OSS unless APP is available sooner, which, as we discussed in that meeting, it often is for middle school students. Those are our three changes.
Thanks. Uh, follow me.
Mr. Chair, we have several changes this year, we reorganized the handbook to be, um, more aligned with what the middle school and how they have their handbook formatted in sections, so it's more user-friendly. Uh, we did not have anything in our handbook about attendance, and so we added that so that there was more transparency around, uh, what our attendance policy is and how we communicate with families about attendance. Uh, we updated some language to reflect standard free screening rather than just for court cards. Uh, updated several things to reflect the language in, uh, policies for our certain zone, including tobacco and alcohol. Updated, uh, health office language to reflect K B D. Updated, um, cell phone smart watches, and then we added the telecommunication devices to reflect. Updated cell phones, heart watches, and then we added the telecommunication devices to reflect J I C J. And safe to tell information was wrong, and so we updated that with new information. And then we added, visited the superintendent here as about the policies that needed to be included. Like, here's a P R document. There were several policies that were included in the handbook that a previous superintendent had selected for us. And we talked about how to select policies included in the handbook could give the impression that only these policies are being important. So I ended up taking those policies and have residency where families can access policies. I did leave all of the notifications.
Thank you. Just, maybe, just a, a observation. I think the policies we just talked about for the district, we swapped out tobacco for nicotine, I think.
And you want to make a change instead of.
I would like to do that. Do we need that changed right away or do we need to? Okay, I'll take care of it.
Hey, Elliot?
Um, I actually sat with Annie and we kind of went through our handbook changes together. Both of our handbooks were structured very similarly, so a lot of what she just summarized are exactly what were updated in the GANP handbook, including some wording in the health office section, the cell phone section reflecting new policy. The safe-to-tell section was outdated, so we put in the information that actually direct school is too safe to tell. And then I just have some bullets here about the school meal prices needing to be updated. A little bullet about the policies needing to be updated pending the direction that we were given. And so that will be taken care of. And then just the labels of, and names for the principal and assistant principal, so nothing too drastic changed.
Thank you. And on the next thing, salary and compensation targets, it's like to have some word.
We're gonna do that next month. Is that what we've discussed, like, we're going to do that tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, my question was if there's gonna be a preliminary discussion about that tonight? I would, no, I actually think it would.
Yeah, so, so this discussion, I, I just wanted to maybe just put my thoughts out there and maybe have a free discussion about setting targets for administration for next year on how much money should be allocated for salary compensation? I think the general feeling is, my, my impression is that we are struggling to keep up with our salary schedule compared to surrounding states. We're doing okay in county-ish, not gonna compete with the reservation schools necessarily, but we're doing okay compared to others. But not the surrounding states, we're having trouble, trouble in recruitment as a result. Sometimes we lose staff to higher paying jobs elsewhere. And so as we're looking at trying to, if we wanted to try to increase compensation for staff, there's just two ways that we can do that. We can, we have a limited budget, so we can increase the percentage of the budget we're spending on salary compensation. And/or we can increase the size of the slice of pie for each member of staff, whether it's change the ratio of staff to students. And so I think it might be helpful, talking with Mike, seemed like maybe this would be, would be helpful if as a board, we came up with targets for them to say, I think this year, or last year, maybe we would like seventy-nine percent of our budget was spent on salary compensation. And so given that figure, maybe it would be appropriate for us to say to administration, next year, we'd like you to figure out whether you make that eighty percent. And get, maybe get creative on, on how we're gonna trim or what we're gonna do elsewhere to help us be more competitive in salary compensation. And then same thing for the ratio of staff to students. If we feel like that maybe we need to increase the size of the slice of pie, then we could give the target to administration on, on what ratio would we like to see for staff to student ratio? And so that's, I, I think those would be very broad recommendations that we can give, that would give a lot of leeway to district administration, building principles on how then to move those targets. And we give them plenty of, we could give them plenty of notice. You can have a year essentially if you're after those, those months. So I think Travis, we were seventy-nine last year and ten, do you know what we are based on these changes, what we're gonna be at?
Not currently.
Probably higher?
Guess, yeah, probably. But I, I don't have the complete budget.
So I think you'll have, you'll be able to have some numbers for us to look at next meeting, that we could historically see what we were doing as a district on percentage of budget for salary compensation. That we could then consider what we felt like that maybe ought to be for this, for next, next year. So as we have starting discussions about what compensation we're gonna offer, what acting we're gonna offer for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year. Hopefully those targets will be united.
Mr. Chair, I just want to chime in. I appreciate Scott joining the committee. Karen and I have been on this for a couple of years and this is something we've heard for competitiveness. We totally understand we need to be more competitive. It's just difficult when we offer so much to our students. And I think that needs to be remembered, that, you know, during the conversation with salaries, I think last year we brought up that over ten pays about eighty-two or eighty-three percent of their budget goes towards staff salary. And that's a great number and I think that's something you could definitely look at any forward, but the problem is that we offer a lot more programs to our students. And so there's this give and take, like you said, and so, you know, how we can do that is either through electrician or enlarging classroom sizes. So I really like this idea, like this metric, and I like this gradual consideration of, you know, what ways can we start to turn that in certain areas or making it what is our more competitive? Because although we have these wonderful programs that we offer as a district, what's, I feel, my fear is, is that over time that's not gonna matter because we're losing those quality teachers and coaches and instructors and things like that. And so then, you know, these programs are gonna start to fade. And so I think, you know, that's been a goal of ours. I think we're all in agreement that we know that we need to be more competitive. And I do think this year looks great, our numbers as far as bumping up our base. I'm really proud of what we were able to do with that. So I appreciate Mike and Travis getting able to do that. And so I, I look forward to having this discussion. I think it's something we should report with.
I support setting targets. Thanks, Scott.
Next topic is looking at climate surveys.
So I think we have, we've done some sort of form of climate surveys and we've asked, and I think Mike, you can clarify for us. When was the last time you did that? And what, what did those look like?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, the last time the district did climate surveys was the summer of twenty twenty-three. And they were the WSBA's climate survey process. After that survey was done, each building made an action plan, which they gave to the board, I think in the fall of twenty-three, that outlined what we're going to do with the results. And we haven't spoken about it in the board meetings yet, but it's been two years.
So, but both of these, both of these discussions, I guess, are related for me. So we're looking at the way to attract quality staff, to retain quality staff. One way is in money. People expect to be compensated well for their work. We would like to do that, I think. But, but secondly is having a quality environment for people to work in. We have, if, if you're, if the school you work at is awesome and you love going to work and you love your coworkers and you love your boss, people will often take less money from an environment like that even. And I think probably we largely have those environments here, but without a climate survey, I'm not sure we'd help. So we, we do exit surveys. We try to talk to folks, believe, to find out why. But I think it would be helpful for us to have on a continuing basis an understanding of how people and our employees in the district now, especially those that are staying, how they feel about their jobs. It's pretty common practice. In, in my job, we do climate surveys a lot, have an opportunity to rate leadership at various levels above us, and oftentimes those things are used to figure out how to, how to make improvement. And so I'd like to see us do something like that on more than an every several year basis, but maybe every six month or at least every year basis. Then we, we would need to do it in a way that staff would feel confident that it's anonymous, whereas if it's anonymous, they would like. If you do a multiple choice survey, that's can, can be very anonymous. If you provide written feedback, you may you may de-anonymize yourself that way. That would have to be a choice. So maybe the survey has to be posted outside of the district, somebody else has to host it for us and distribute the results. I think key would be the ability for staff to go away, their supervisors on a, on the chain potentially, maybe direct to work, but particularly their direct supervisor. That's, that's the point of this discussion I want, like, to look at.
Yeah, I'm wrong. I feel like that WSBA survey the last time in twenty twenty-three, I think it just stuck out. It seemed like it was more on district level and board level, like, and so maybe this needs to be more, if you said, direct, direct supervisors and.
Mr. Jensen, Mr. Superintendent, I absolutely support this idea and some things to think about. While multiple choice is great for protecting the anonymity, it can also leave some gaps in terms of collecting quality feedback. And so I would encourage there to be some open, free-form response questions in there. And then just being thoughtful about what types of questions we ask, like, we ask how long someone's been with the district or what subject they teach. Even if it's anonymous, you can figure out who it is. And then something to consider in terms of who revises all of these. We wanted to opt to stay local and not use an outside source, so you could certainly rotate between schools, have a team from the middle school, bring in the high school, have a team, so like, just as an option or an outside source that actually should be good internally. It's good.
So I guess last thing, I think what I'm hoping or expecting is that for next meeting, maybe that Mike, you could have some ideas for us on, on on what climate survey might look like, and we could have a little insight and have to go on the, you could, uh, direct you to.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, yeah, put together some ideas in consultation with the admin team from meeting on Thursday this week. Look at their feedback and be ready to maybe share some, some thoughts.
May seventh, special board meeting, preliminary budget review. Put that on your calendar. May seventh, that is, and then twentieth, regular board meeting. What's our dates for graduation?
June.
First, June first? Okay, and okay, Minnesota, December Law Conference, save the dates.
May third.
Five, is when?
May thirtieth.
Friday third.
Okay.
Friday and Sunday.
They just worked on it, so I thought I'd just ask people what they have.
Is there a special meeting scheduled for this time?
Yes.